I move the council certifying closed session just concluded. Nothing was discussed except the matter of matters specifically identified in the motion to convene in closed session and lawfully permitted to be discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion.
Second. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Olinger?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Amikis?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yow?
Aye.
Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to our October the 8th, 2024 regular council meeting. Pledge allegiance, Mr. Olinger.
Pledge allegiance, certified, United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda this evening is the treasurer's reports and minutes of previous meetings.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move right along. Public forum, the public forum is an opportunity for town citizens, businesses, and groups to speak or bring to our attention any government-related items. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Groups are requested to have a spokesperson. If you're here for the public hearing, please hold your comments until later. Is there anyone who'd like to speak this evening? You can come on up, ma'am.
Do I speak this way or that way?
Just face us. Face us?
Face us.
Uh huh, you can stand right in the middle, right, right there. That's good, that's good.
Invisible podium.
Not much of a public speaker, so we'll try, we'll do this. Yeah, I'd like to see on the local or state level, on a local or state level, that there be protections or some actions taken to protect citizens from predatory practices with service providers, of utility service providers. So, for instance, I've had a lot of grief with Comcast, and I've found that the amount of issues that I've had have just rise to the level of being predatory. And I have plenty of examples that I could give, but not in three minutes, and it's probably better to receive those, like, in writing if there's something that, you know, a place to send that, or if that's something that's on the county's radar, I would, I mean, the city's, the town's radar, I'd love to know that as well.
All right.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind just saying your name and your address with the Madam Clerk.
Yes, my name is Jennifer Cosby. And I'm a resident of, I see this as town, I'm just outside the town, so I don't know if it...
You live in the county?
Yes, but I would think that that pertains to citizens, that many would be involved, I mean, that it would pertain to town members as well.
Right.
Because, I mean, the circumstances that I've experienced were pretty egregious, so...
All right, good, thank you. We'll check into that for you, ma'am, we'll have Stanford look into that for you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? All right, I'm closing the public forum. Mr. Yow? Close session action.
There was, there was none.
Huh?
No action, no action.
That's right. No action, all right? Andrew, discussion of zoning and subdivision ordinance update.
I feel a little naked without my podium to protect me here this evening. Is it registering? Okay. Exactly. Good evening. This item stems from a discussion we had at the Public Safety, Public Works Planning, Community Development Committee of Council, related to the zoning overhaul that we're currently undertaking for the town. As part of that, when I had arrived, there were some densities and minimum lot sizes that were involved, that involved a reduction of these to allow for greater density with this overhaul, which would allow for greater infill development within the town. As we've been proceeding through this and having conversations with the planning commission, there was some concern expressed as to how much of a reduction these were in the lot sizes and what that potential growth in infill could be. We had the conversation at the committee level, there seemed to be a consensus at this time to likely retain our existing minimum lot sizes and densities, but there was a request that it come to the full council for discussion, to be able to get consensus of the full council before we roll these numbers out to, to the public. So, just wanted to run through briefly what we're talking about here. Actually, if you wouldn't mind just advancing the slide for me. It's just one of those nights, I think. So, our current minimum lot sizes, for the most part, are 10,000 square feet for single-family homes or for duplexes, and 2,000 square feet for townhouses. The lots have a minimum lot width of 80 feet. What we're looking at, or what's contemplated in the ordinance currently, is minimum lot sizes, depending on the zoning category, of 7,500 or 5,000 square feet for single-family homes. There's a corresponding minimum lot width that's reduced as well. We do have some homes currently within the town that meet these proposed parameters. These are a couple of houses that are on Virginia Avenue. These lot sizes are approximately 4,800 square feet, so they're under that 5,000 that was being contemplated. Actually, if you wouldn't mind going to the next one. Looking at semi-detached or duplex homes, this, or semi-detached, sorry, these are not duplexes, these are each on their individual lots, but they have a shared wall. So, these are on, this is on the corner of West Evans and West Street. These ones are lot sizes of a little over 21, nearly 2,200 square feet. Under the proposal, they could go as small as 4,200 square feet. Go to the next one. For the two units, these are duplexes, again, this is on West Street, very near that same intersection with Evans. This is an existing duplex that's being rehabilitated. This one has a lot size of approximately 6,000 square feet. Under the proposed ordinance, they could go as small as 7,500 square feet. And then for townhouses, the standards are largely the same. The one difference that's being proposed here is currently townhouses are required to have a minimum acreage for the townhouse development of at least three acres. There was not being any minimum proposed in the update to allow for more infill development, potentially townhouses, but they would have to have a minimum of at least three units. And that's with a conditional use permit. So, looking at the, as I said, there are a number of current properties, in terms of those that have development that are under 5,000 square feet, there's approximately 130 that are built upon in the town. Under 7,500 square feet, there are approximately 1,200, nearly 1,300 lots that do have homes. This is much more similar to the traditional development patterns, what we see from the older lots, the older development in town, these smaller lot sizes that have been built upon. But wanted to, as I said, have the conversation with the full council. Coming out of committee, the consensus seemed to be to maintain the lot sizes, if in the future we chose to increase the density, we could do so at that time, but we wanted to have that conversation. So, I'll happily take any questions the council may have, but do look for some direction from you.
Anyone?
I have questions, just a quick question, just your thinking, so the previous proposal...
Jamie, we cut your, thank you.
The previous proposal was to reduce the minimum lot size, and out of the committee meeting last month, it, the consensus was to leave it as is.
Correct. The draft language that we're currently working with has a reduction of the lot sizes, but what came out of committee was, was sort of general direction that we wanted to confirm here with the full council, but to essentially retain our current minimum lot sizes.
Unless it's a lot of record, correct?
Correct. Again, those that are essentially legal non-conforming lots that are able to be developed currently but are under our size limits, would retain those rights and privileges.
Anyone else? Thank you.
So, here, hearing no objection, then we're going to look to retain the current minimum lot sizes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 9.01, public hearing of fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget amendment had.
Good evening. Tonight, we have a budget hearing in accordance with Virginia State Code for any budget amendments that exceed 1% of the current year budget, town budget. And this year, the amendment amount is $14,399,232, representing 24.6% of the currently stated fiscal year 2025 budget. These amendment amounts relate to projects that were not, that were budgeted and not completed in fiscal year 2024. Capital projects such as the funding for the county pool, the town contribution to the county pool, $4,836,100, funding for parking and bridge projects, $3,055,543, and as well as other projects going on for new well development, the wastewater plant digestive project, and other open purchase orders and supply orders that were not delivered by June 30th of 2024. As a result, we are required to carry those items over to fiscal year 2025.
All right. At this time, I'm opening the floor for public hearing. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Would anyone like to speak? No one? Closing public hearing at this time. FY25 budget amendment relating to FY24 carryover had.
At this time, staff recommends that council authorizes the town manager and the town treasurer to make the fiscal year 2025 budget amendments for the 2024 fiscal year budget carryovers totaling $14,399,232.
I move the recommendation.
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Olinger?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Amikis?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yow?
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.02, council received reports, any questions or recommendations at this time? None? All right, moving right along. Ordinance amending chapter 24 related to sanitary sewer lateral, Jim.
Well, good evening. Before you have the first reading of regarding a proposed change to town code section 24-166, that's, this section of the code establishes responsibility for cleanup and damage resulting from sanitary sewer malfunctions, blockages, or backups. Staff is proposing a change to the ordinance to clarify the town code by removing the word located and substituting it with the word originating to the definition of sanitary sewer lateral. Also, for emphasis, we're recommending adding additional language to a sentence discussing the ownership of sanitary sewer lateral to include and maintain, to promote a clear understanding of the owner's maintenance responsibility for a sanitary sewer lateral under the code. This, if approved, this ordinance change does not have a financial impact to the town, and this is the first reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No question? All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Andrew, ordinance amendment, chapter 20 relating to motor vehicles. First reading.
This is a first reading on a proposed amendment to chapter 20, section 20-4 of the town code.
Andrew, that mic's not on.
Sorry, Jim thwarted me. This is a proposed amendment to chapter 20, section 20-4 of the town code related to inoperable vehicles. This is, comes at the recommendation of town legal counsel, as currently, it is not overtly stated within the chapter that we may assess civil penalties. We do have a line item related to this in the fine and fee schedule, but they worry that if this were challenged in court, that we might face ramifications in that regard. So, the recommendation is that council hold the first reading of ordinance number O-2024-010, amending chapter 20 of the town code by amending section 20-4 relating to inoperable motor vehicles this evening, with a second reading scheduled for the regular meeting next month. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any question?
Just one, Mr. Mayor, just, I'm not sure if we asked this during the committee or not. What, what would be the civil penalties? What, what would that look like once, once enacted?
I believe that it's $50 per day, and each day constitutes a separate violation, so they are, they would be cumulative.
Anyone else? Thank you, Andrew. Process for interaction committee agenda item, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Historically, during the last decade, the interaction committee has met infrequently. The committee currently meets on an as-needed basis. However, recent discussion between several of the committee members indicate the desire to meet more frequently and possibly on a more regular basis. With this new intention, the personnel and ordinance committee discussed whether or not a formal process should be enacted for council to approve town agenda items of the interaction committee. Prior to August of 2010, agenda items were approved and referred by council and the Board of Supervisors, but at the August 10th, 2010 regular council meeting, council voted to allow items to be discussed by the interaction committee without council's prior approval or referral. After discussion, the personnel and ordinance committee recommended that council return to the process of the town agenda items being approved and/or referred by council. The committee further recommended adding a standing agenda item to the regular council agenda, where council can discuss and refer items to the interaction committee to be included in the next regular agenda. As proposed, there is no financial impact to the town. The recommendation of the personnel and ordinance committee is that council include a standing reoccurring agenda item on all future regular meetings, council agendas, to discuss and refer items to the interaction committee. Further, that council direct all town agenda items of the interaction committee to be prior approved by council. Be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Yes. So, for those that are on the interaction committee now, what are some issues that you guys have discussed since we've been meeting, just topics? What kind of things, if I, if I can ask that?
Last meeting, I think, at the pool, or about some data...
Transportation, uh, what else?
General interest things.
Some general concerns about, you know, the effect of the growing population within the town and how that might affect transportation, how that might affect local schools.
It, that kind of begs the question, you know, and I, obviously, we're not going to fix this tonight, but if we're going to have an interaction committee with stakeholders at the table, it seems like the school board should have representation on that as well, especially if we're going to be issuing, talking about issues that, that impact the schools directly. I just, just think, for good form, if we're going to have issues that do impact them, it would be great to have them at the table also. So, it, there's nothing we can do about that, but I'm just throwing that out there for whoever makes those decisions.
Anyone else? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Olinger?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Amikis?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yow?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Acceptance of grant funds, Chief Sutter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before you, you have an R and R, a report recommendation for the acceptance of a heat grant through the Virginia State Police Heat Program, help eliminate all the theft for $12,500 to help support two, two cameras and one additional license plate reader through the grant funding through heat to deploy in town to help provide real-time intelligence and problem-solving, crime-solving abilities in real time to the citizens in the Culver Police Department. I know I presented the use of technology before members of the Public Safety Committee a couple of months ago, and also Neighborhood Watch, so I know some of this is a refresher, so I thought it's a good opportunity always to provide some transparency, to show you guys exactly what we're using it for, and also to show our members of our viewing public and our, our live public to show in full transparency kind of what we're doing. So, just very briefly, we talked about emerging technologies in law enforcement. As we know, it's ever-changing. We all know criminals are using the technology in more, way more advanced, often cases than, than what law enforcement has to its fingertips, provided to service victims of crime, obviously. Another important one, it does provide a workforce multiplier for us, especially with the growing population and a growing town that we have. It does provide a turn of future crime, and then it's community expectations. So, when citizens expect for us to solve crime, bring offenders to justice, provide services to victims, they, you know, they watch it on TV, they read articles, I think there's a community expectations to provide whatever means necessary at our fingertips to provide these services to our, to our citizens. Having said that, this is very important to us, is to make sure we do provide a balance between privacy concerns and solving crime, so it is always a balancing act. So, we do follow federal and state codes. I know a lot of the technology that we use is, is overwatched by federal and state codes, and so we're in compliance there. Ethics and best practices, as we are nationally advanced accredited through Kalia, they provide best practices. We also follow through the International Association Chiefs of Police best practices through these uses of technology. Departmental policy, obviously, there's policy in place to put guardrails on every piece of technology that we use. And then also transferred to community. As you guys maybe recall, the past couple of years since we started deploying some technology, we've had public hearings for the public to come speak, we've met with some civic groups, did some presentations, Neighborhood Watch meetings, so forth and so on, press releases, social media releases, everything we can do to get the word out into the public, exactly what we're doing, what we're using it for. So, I think that's important to make sure, and I take this opportunity tonight to do that too, so I kind of jumped on it, to use this opportunity. And also, using open source intelligence. So, the technology we kind of, you're currently using, kind of what we're talking about tonight with the R and Rs, the license plate readers, obviously, we've had body one cameras for several years, in-car cameras, we've probably had for, well, I would say 25 years here in Culpeper, security cameras, unmanned aerial vehicles, as we know as drones, and then the open source intelligence that we're currently use. That's Mr. Russell.
Can you give definition to open source intelligence?
So, anything that commonly a person can find on the internet, that's the open source intelligence. That's a good question, thank you for asking. Anything, any common person can find on the internet. So, social media, there, there are some services that you can subscribe to that helps compile and organize open source intelligence. Anything like, any history that you do on the internet, these companies can compile that information, make it nice and tidy for us to, to be able to use. License plate readers, this is example, kind of what we, we use and we see every day for an LPR, or all kinds of license plate readers, one of our police cars, we kind of shot. The important part for us to know, and for our citizens to know, for you guys to know, is it shoots the license plate, doesn't use any kind of facial recognition software, it is strictly prohibited by the vendor to use any facial recognition software, we don't abide by that. It shoots the rear of the car, it does not shoot the, the forward-facing portion of the car, it's always shooting the rear. So, we think that's important. So, that's kind of what example of a, a license plate reader is. And I think it's important that there's a link there, we, we share this on our websites, we share this through social media, we've shared this with you guys in the, in the past, that we do provide a transparency portal for our technology and our, our flock cameras. So, any citizen go on that link and show exactly how many hits we get on any given month through a 30-day period, shows you how many cars were registered, going through our license plate readers, it shows you a policy, it shows success stories, it shows a lot of different information that we use, other agencies that we share our, our data with, it shows all that as well. So, we think that's important, that citizens can go on there and see that activity. Camera system, I will tell you that that's existing now as we speak. You can see the current, and these are not, you know, everybody's supposed to buy surveillance cameras, these are not surveillance cameras. These are cameras that are, that we will share with the public, that you can see openly, nothing, nothing's covert with these cameras, but as you can see, locations, that we currently have cameras as we speak here, sit here tonight, and we do have 83 current cameras that are maintained by town IT through the vigilance system. That's an example, that's one of the cameras, again, nothing, nothing is covert here, we want the citizens to know we have cameras, we want our citizens to know that, you know, when their kids are playing at the splash pad, that we do have some eyes up there for the safety of our kids. We do get some nefarious actors up there from time to time, so that's one example. Here's another example of, another camera system down at the depot, at night, it's the common courtyard area, of course, it looks much different now down there than that picture, pre-construction. This actually camera right here helped solve a, a pretty serious aggravated malicious wounding a couple of years ago, if you guys will recall, outside of one of our establishments. It actually helped bring, I think we arrested 13 people in that mob assault, and actually, it came into, it showed business practices of the business in question too, as well, that night. Obviously, our drones is part of our technology platforms, well, we've been using these for several years now. Again, tremendous success stories with our drone program. We just had one last week with a stolen car, you guys might have seen on social media, we were able to find the offender hiding in the backyard in some bushes, and the drone pilot was able to call the officers in back to where he was hiding at, and, and take him into apprehension. There's a picture of one of our first apprehensions that we did with the sheriff's office, that was escaped fugitive from the hospital from Louisa County, was there getting treatment, and he was a offender of a violent felony, escaped from the hospital. Again, our drones also for non-criminal, we use technology, every, all the technology that we use is also used for non-criminal cases, so here's a fire at Baby Gems. The fire department is very pleased that we bring our drones out for command and control, and also, most of our drones have thermal, which shows hotspots, so where they can hit the fire, and be more, more efficient hitting the fire. So, that's example, that we've used them on the forestry fire back last, early this year up there in Boston, the fire department was very pleased that that, actually, the middle of the night, and show where the hotspots were, in the wind direction, the smoke direction, through thermal. And that leads us to our Real-Time Crime and Information Center, I know some questions a couple of weeks ago, and I know we presented this to council a couple of months ago, just a refresher. We did institute this as a platform for all of our technology to come in, come into, and a lot of people ask, well, what is our Real-Time Crime Center, what exactly is it? Basically, it's very simple, it, it is a, a central hub for all this technology to come into one place, right? It doesn't do anything, it's just a central hub for your LPR data, your camera data, someone there to manage it all, and make it useful, make, make it actionable, and put that information right to the officer's ear on his fingertips in real time. So, it also has a communications console there, so the person managing that center can operate directly with the officer in real time, still going through a dispatch into land precious time where that officer can get that information in real time, or we say near real time. More importantly, it provides citizen officer safety, when our officer's on that call, there's a bit of technology that we can get, can see what's going on before the officer sometimes gets there, or while he's on the call, we can direct that information right to their officer then there. Again, it's a central hub for all of our vast range of technologies. It's aimed to be proactive, and it focuses on monitoring, determining, and evaluating criminal activity in real time. And also provides collaborative on-scene support and information. So, Real-Time Crime and Information Center, again, it's not really crime-related, errors... Air, Real-Time Crime Center, it's incident-based. We're not a large enough jurisdiction to have a full-time, real-time crime center like most larger jurisdictions, so Air is incident-based. It's a collateral duty for personnel to operate this center, but it could be a fire call, you know, it could be a fire scene, it could be a weather event, it could be anything non-criminal as well that we can stand up the Real-Time Crime Center and Information Center. And what does it look like? I know some of you guys have seen it. It's a small little area that we partition. Again, most of this was funded by grant funding, which we're looking to have that grant funding to operate it. More welcome to come by for tour at any time. Again, a major takeaway, it's why I wrap this up, again, we'll always consider that balancing act, that is, that's very important to us. We always, believe me, we put more guardrails on ourselves than the state legislation does. I've seen that firsthand last year at the general assembly down there, talking about LPRs. No one could agree on proper legislation. We do have a 30-day retention rate for all data through our LPR systems, so only tags can live for 30 days. That's the third lowest retention data period in the country, so 30 days. That's through a Virginia Attorney General opinion a couple of years ago. There's no, there's no legislation that addresses it. Transparency will always be key, which why I take this opportunity tonight, it's always nice, and then we're always committed to providing service to our victims, providing real-time intelligence to our police officers on the street when they need it. And be remiss in that to say, it takes good people to run good technology, and we have them. I know Todd Drucker sitting behind me, without him, we would be nowhere with this, and we have a lot of good people that's managing this software and these applications behind the scene, so. Couple successes real quick, I'll just hit on, I know we talked about the mob assault down at the depot, but we've located various missing children and endangered adults through air technology. Not even air endangered adults, missing children, but other agencies, missing children, endangered adults through Flock. The Merchant's Grocery Burglary that you guys may know about, that's a multi-state investigation with, we've made, I think, five arrests in that case so far, and I would tell you, not to brag, but if it wasn't for air technology at the Culpeper Police Department, that case would never be solved, and then Kentucky, North Carolina, Georgia, Texas, and Florida would all have, still have open cases. Now they're going to have closed cases because of Little Culpeper, Virginia, which I'll brag about every day. We also, through our Flock LPRs, we kind of broke up an organized theft ring at Walmart and Target that turned into a federal investigation. So for the FBI to take a theft, a shoplifting ring, it has to be pretty big, so it's a multi-state federal investigation. A couple, a group out of Baltimore was going through East Coast and stealing tens of nine hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of merchandise. We got him, we arrested him here right in Little Culpeper, Virginia. Assisting fire departments and state forestry department, we talked about a little bit as well, stolen vehicles, we've had a lot of those recovered, as you saw last week in the press release we did. Vehicle break-in arrests, I know at Rockwater Park, we had a person breaking in vehicles up there at Rockwater Park while they're jogging on a nature trail. We made arrests on those cases as well through the vigilance camera systems up there and the Flock that's up there. We assisted Culpeper County Sheriff's Office, and the sheriff's office will say, tell this to you, that there was a barricade subject got in the county with a handgun. We didn't know where the handgun was, he was homicidal, suicidal. We flew a drone right up to the window, and we were able to see where the placement of that firearm was, and they were able to use tactics to bring that person safely into custody without any shots fired, which was remarkable. And in various other misdemeanors and assisting other agencies in solving crimes, there's too many to name, so. Questions on that? Okay, I'll just say, I'll just finish up, that the recommendations for council approve the $12,500 grant from Virginia State Police Heat Grant. It's for the, for the three cameras and the one LPR.
Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Olinger.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikis.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yeo.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Town manager must be reporting. Any questions or comments? Anything else from the council members? If not, we are adjourned.